Hello, welcome to the Regional Transportation Authority's public hearing on the proposed 2024 Regional Operating Budget and Five-Year Capital Program. We're going to start off here in just a few minutes. We ask that everyone remain muted until we call on you to provide any comments. If you would like to make a comment, please put your name in the chat, and we will add you to the list to be called on. If you've already emailed us and said that you want to talk, we already have you on a list, so don't worry about that. But if you have not emailed us, please put your name in the chat, and we'll call on people in the order that you have listed your names. If you're experiencing any technical difficulties, please let us know in the chat. And if you can't access the chat box, please email communications, C O M M U N I C A T I O N S at R T A Chicago dot org. With any questions or technical issues, we'll be checking that inbox throughout the meeting. I'm going to introduce RTA Board Member Director J D Ross to open this hearing. Go ahead, Director Ross.
Good evening, and thank you for joining us. Let me reiterate some of the guidelines that Tina just went through before this hearing. All participants will remain on mute until it is their turn to speak. If for any reason you experience difficulties, first use the chat box, and if you cannot, please email at communications@rtachicago.org. Everything discussed in this meeting will be recorded and considered formal public comment. Before the presentations begin, I'd like to acknowledge the other RTA Board members who are with us and ask them to unmute and introduce themselves when I call their name. Board members, if you could introduce yourselves and what area of the region you represent, it would be appreciated. Let's start first with Director Carey.
Good evening. I'm Pat Carey, live in Grayslake, and I represent Lake County and look forward to your comments.
Thank you. Director Gorman, I'm not sure if we can hear you, so can you go ahead and speak to us? Apparently she can now. Director Gorman is with us, and she represents suburban Cook. Director Groban.
Good evening. I'm Chris Groban. I represent Kane County and live in Geneva, and I look forward to hearing what everyone has to say tonight.
Thank you. Director Saager.
Yes, good evening. I'm Brian Saager from Woodstock, Illinois, representing McKinry County on the board, and I welcome your comments at this evening's public hearing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any other board members who joined us? Apparently not. Thank all you board members for being with us tonight. Now I'd like to call this hearing to order and invite RTA Executive Director Leanne Redden to introduce a few staff to walk us through the budget, and then she will come back and give us a preview of what to expect from regional transit in 2024. Leanne?
Thank you, Director Ross, and thank you, everyone, and welcome. As just noted, I am the Executive Director of the RTA, and that's really, as I think many of you know, the Planning and the Financial Oversight Agency for the Region's Transit System. That system is operated by three service boards, CTA, Metra, and PACE, who have continued this year to really provide vital transportation options to millions of people of the Chicago region, and welcoming back riders with flexible schedules, new fare products, innovative pilots that are really starting to meet the changing needs of our region. We are seeing more collaboration between the agencies than ever before as they adapt these new needs, and yet we know that there is still much more work ahead for all of us. This is a critical time for public transit with a looming fiscal cliff when the federal dollars run out, leaving a possible 20% budget hole as soon as 2026. That large of a gap could result in cuts that would be absolutely devastating for people in our region who rely on public transit, in addition to the impacts that a smaller transit system would have on our congested roads, our economy, and the environment as a whole. We believe that transit is the answer to many of our region's greatest challenges, but to be the solution we know it can be, we must reform our funding structure and become less reliant on fares and end the decades-long cycle of chronic underfunding so that the RTA and the service boards can deliver the service and system that riders and residents deserve. I'm happy to introduce RTA's Chief Financial Officer, Kevin Boiso, to talk a little bit more about the operating budget, and after him, Brian Lowenberg, to talk about our capital program. Then I'll come back with you to have a look at the year ahead, and then we'll open it up for public comments. So next slide, please.
Thank you, Leanne, and welcome everybody to the budget hearing. So as Leanne just mentioned, my name is Kevin Boiso, and I am the CFO for the RTA. We're going to cover a little bit about the operating budget for the regional transit system and for 2024, and a little bit about the two-year plan and the capital programming, again, as Leanne just mentioned. Next slide, please. Throughout this year, our region transit system, which again is operated by CTA, Metra, and PACE, has worked to improve service, expand the access, and bring back riders. And I am pleased to report that transit continues to make a steady recovery. We are encouraged by the continuing growth in ridership, which is forecasted at almost 325 million rides regionally. This is an expected growth of almost 14% compared to 2022 and reach almost 60% of the pre-pandemic levels. More riders have returned to the system, though they may not be riding as frequently as in the past. And we're seeing ridership trends that point to changing travel patterns, such as more weekend and midday trips rather than just morning and afternoon, and afternoon commutes. Next slide, please. Before I walk you through the 2024 regional budget, I want to make an important point, which we have again made across every presentation that we have had so far. Our system's funding model is to rely on fares and like transit agencies across the country. We need to secure increased funding for transit operations to sustain our transit system over the long term. Our region climate equity and economic goals depend on a well-functioning transit system. Here are some details on the 2024 regional budget. It is projected to have expenses of just over $3.9 billion. This is a 9.5% increase over the 2023 budget. The service board expense growth ranges from 9% to 11% as each agency continues to address the disruptions to the labor market caused by the pandemic. Each operator also intends to add service in 2024. As an example, CTA and Metra are budgeting for service that will approach pre-pandemic levels, while PACE innovates with the new Bus Rapid Transit Service and partnerships to solve the riders' first and last mile issues. The agency budgets assume ridership at a collective 62% of pre-COVID levels. No fare increases are planned for CTA nor PACE, while Metra has proposed to revamp its entire zone-based fare structure with the resulting fares actually being lower than the pandemic levels. Next slide, please. This slide shows a snapshot of what the revenues of sources or sources of revenue are and how we're supporting the 2024 regional budget. The proposed regional budget and two-year plan projects that the federal relief funding will begin to exhaust in 2025. This is a message that we continue to share across the region and that a resulting fiscal cliff of more than $730 million or about 20% of the regional budget is still anticipated for 2026. The RTA will update a forecast of fiscal cliff information in 2024 as the cliff gets closer to reality and as we start the 2025-2026 or 2025 budget, 26-27 budget plans. Closing the gap is critical, but it is important to keep in mind that closing the gap will not pay for the system that riders want or deserve at these points, so we want to again highlight that point. Next slide, please. Under this slide, we're showing a snapshot of the expenses by service board or by agency. On the expense side, you'll see that the 2024 budget includes a total of $3.9 billion in expenses and increase over the previous years largely due to labor costs and inflation. However, the shares by agency are a little changed from previous budgets. CTA makes up the majority of the budgets. That's what shows on the graph here. And that's 51% of total expenses, Metra at 28, and PACE at 9%. The RTA agency budget makes up 1.3% of the total regional expense. A major issue impacting quality of service for riders has been ongoing labor shortages, and we have seen this not just within the transportation industry but across the, across different sectors as well. The service boards, particularly CTA, which is meeting the moment plan, have outlined how they plan to hire more operators and provide reliable service. The RTA will continue to monitor the hiring and restoration of services throughout 2024. Now I will turn it over to Brian Lowenberg to talk a bit about the capital program.
Thanks, Kevin. I'm Brian Lowenberg, Manager of Capital Programs here at RTA. The capital program represents the funds used to invest in long-term system maintenance as well as expansions and improvements to the system. Capital projects include the purchase of new vehicles, repairs to stations, including infrastructure to expand accessibility, new technologies, and projects that improve both bus and rail corridors. Next slide, please. The 2024 to 2028 capital program contains $6 billion in funding. 71% of that funding comes from federal sources, which include both formula and discretionary funds. 20% comes from the state, including pay-go funding from the motor fuel tax, and 9% comes from a combination of CTA and RTA bonds. Finally, other local funding sources shown on the slide make up a bit less than 1% of available funds. Next slide, please. The funding split by service board is $3.6 billion for CTA, or 61% of the program, $1.95 billion for Metra, or one-third of the program, and $413 million for PACE, or 7% of the program. Next slide, please. All capital projects included in the proposed program have been evaluated using 15 metrics, which cover 12 regionally important themes. This is the first year of evaluating capital projects using these new metrics, which were chosen during development of transit as the answer. During the development of these metrics, the RTA organized the Priority Projects Technical Working Group, made up of experts from CTA, Metra, PACE, and CMAP, or Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, who considered stakeholder input and recommended various improvements to the existing capital programming process. The group also considered new state legislation that mandated a transparent prioritization process for regional transit projects receiving state capital, which called out specific themes to be included in the evaluation process. You can learn more about the 12 themes and 15 metrics used to evaluate projects in both the strategic plan and the budget book on the RTA website. We will also be publishing related blog posts discussing the new evaluation process in the coming year. Sign up for the RTA newsletter to be alerted about these posts. Now let's take a quick look at the themes that we have used to evaluate the projects. The first four shown are access to key destinations, equity based on residential geography, benefit to riders, and capacity benefit and need. Next slide, please. The next four themes are economic impact, service speed and reliability, regulatory impact, and operating costs. Next slide, please. And the final four themes are accessibility for people with disabilities, safety and security, climate impact, and state of good repair. All of the project evaluations are available for review in the Budget Book Appendix, found on the RTA website, and will be available in both a searchable and downloadable format on RTA's website following the board adoption of this budget later in the month. Next slide, please. We wanted to touch on some key projects included in the capital program in three important areas that the regional transit system is focused on addressing. These focus areas include providing for a more equitable transportation system, working to achieve a fully accessible system, and reducing transit's climate impact. The service boards have put a significant emphasis into the 2024 to 2828 capital program on investing in a more equitable transit system. For CT equity projects are including the Redline Extension, which is funded with $704 million in the program, and the 95th Street Terminal Electrification Project, funded with $8 million in the program. For Metra, equity projects include the new Auburn Park Station, funded with $33 million, and the Harvey Transportation Center, funded with $24 million. And finally, for PACE, equity projects include the Pulse 95th Street Line, funded with $20 million, and electrification of the North Division Garage in Waukegan, funded with $63 million. Next slide, please. Another regional emphasis with significant funding in the 2024 to 2028 capital program is the continued effort to make the system fully accessible. CTA is implementing the All Stations Accessibility Program, which focuses on making stations fully vertically accessible. Funding includes improvements for Oak Park and Richland on the Green Line, Cicero and Austin on the Blue Line, and Clyburn on the Red Line, $128 million. Metro's accessibility enhancements include the purchase of new rail cars to be fully wheelchair accessible, with $286 million in the fund, plus their station accessibility enhancement program, which includes $271 million in funding. PACE's accessibility projects include the fully accessible new Pulse-Hallsted Avenue Line, funded with $40 million, and the Paratransit Vehicle Purchase Program, funded with $31 million in the program. Next slide, please. Finally, the region continues to make major strides in funding cleaner transportation in the 2024 to 2028 capital program, with major investments in several projects. CTA has programmed $185 million for the purchase of articulated electric buses and the associated charging equipment, as well as $158 million to electrify Chicago and 103rd Street garages, as well as to electrify the 95th Street Terminal. Metra is funding new technologies, including zero-emission train sets at $104 million, as well as improved emission technologies in the F-59 locomotive rehab program, funded with $13 million. And PACE is proceeding with electrification of their services. There's a planned investment of $104 million at the Southwest Division Garage, as well as $67 million at the River Division Garage. Now let me turn it back to Leanne. Next slide, please.
Thanks, Brian. So now that we've heard a bit of the specifics about the budget, I just want to spend a few minutes talking about the big picture, really about where we are at, at the RTA, and where we really see our regional transit system going. To provide a regional vision for our system post-COVID and to prepare for the coming fiscal cliff, the RTA Board adopted Transit is the Answer in February 2023. And since then, we've been very busy working with implementing, implementation really, to advance the plan's vision for a safe, reliable, accessible public transportation that connects people to opportunity, advances equity, and helps us combat climate change. Transit is the answer to connecting the most vulnerable people in our region to jobs, healthcare, and many other opportunities. Chicago's regional transit system gives thousands of residents with disabilities and older adults independence through ADA paratransits and reduced fare and free ride programs. As I've mentioned earlier, one of the priorities of transit is the answer is to fully fund and expand these programs to provide more affordable transit. Next year, in partnership with Metra and Cook County, the RTA is proposing a pilot of an expansion on the reduced fare program on Metra to residents for the entire region that are eligible for SNAP. And SNAP is the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, so recipients of that program. SNAP is targeted to households experiencing low income. And in our region, in 2020, it was estimated that approximately 1.2 million people were eligible for the SNAP program. The 18-month pilot that we're proposing will allow those residents to apply through the RTA and ride Metra at reduced fares. The RTA already administers the regional Ride Free and Reduced Fare Program for seniors and people with disabilities, and that program, though, will not change as part of this, associated with this pilot. At this time, the pilot will only be available for reduced fares on Metra, but with additional funding, we're eager to expand it to CTA and PACE. The service boards will continue to make progress on fare integration, and CTA and PACE have expanded their shared passes in recent years and operate on the same Ventra system. Metra monthly pass users can also access unlimited monthly trips on CTA and PACE for an additional $30 a month with the regional Connect Pass. And we look forward to seeing more progress on this front in 2024. As we seek additional funding, we know it is critical to deliver on reforms and improvements that make riding transit more convenient and affordable for people across the region. We hear this loud and clear from many of our advocate partners, and we'll continue to work with the service boards to deliver on key priorities in the strategic plan. Our work to implement Transit is the Answer is underway. And sorry, my computer is freezing up here. Sorry. So we will, as we continue to seek critical funding on the reforms and improvements that make riding transit more convenient and affordable across the region. Other work to implement Transit is the Answer is underway, including development of a Climate Action Plan and a Transit Friendly Communities Guide, collaboration with the City of Chicago Mayor's Office on safety and security issues, and ongoing work to transparently report and analyze our progress and share that data with advocates and the public at large. We also continue to grow our coalition of advocates and riders. So next slide, please. Because we know it'll take a lot of leadership as we look to advance our efforts for state funding and other reforms that are really going to be needed to improve the transit system, I did want to spend a few moments sharing the RTA's legislative priorities and strategies for the year ahead, as well as highlight how we have worked closely with the Illinois General Assembly to date as they advance their transit-related policies. These new initiatives have helped demonstrate how, with sustainable funding, the transit system can better serve riders. So for example, we implemented a program to supply prepaid transit cards to survivors of domestic violence and sexual assaults. The RTA recently funded and delivered 20,000 Ventra cards, preloaded with $20 to partners at the network, an advocacy and support organization who will distribute the cards to survivors. We're also expanding the region's transit benefit program, which lets workers across the region pay for transit using pre-tax dollars starting January 1. Businesses with 50 or more employers and access to frequent transit will be required to offer the program to their employees. And as you heard from Brian, on the capital side, the RTA and service boards continue to deliver on Rebuild Illinois with over $3.5 billion program regionally since 2020. In addition, the region has also received more than $500 million in federal discretionary grants this year to fund significant capital projects. So next slide, please. So to build support for increased funding for transit operations and other agency policy goals, we are widely sharing our legislative agenda. We believe the agenda provides lawmakers with a better understanding of the critical issues facing transit and the implications that these issues could have for our economy and our quality of life in communities across the entire region. This agenda will evolve over time as RTA staff continue to collect feedback and insight from legislators, county boards, our own governing, RTA governing board, and the Transit is the Answer Coalition, as well as other stakeholders. Many of the items included in the agenda are topics we consistently reference when discussing our priorities. Any discussion of the transit system needs to begin with current fiscal, with the current fiscal challenges that the system and that we are facing, and the acknowledgement of the historic underfunding of transit in our region. As we continue to confront a new set of conditions following the pandemic, the system will need to continue to evolve, particularly when it comes to reducing our reliance on our fare revenues, as well as boosting access for riders who are most dependent on the transit network. While we continue to underscore the historic funding challenges and state support, we understand that there is a shared goal of improving system efficiency, costs, savings, and accountability. The RTA will continue to lead collaboration among the service boards on fare policies and thoughtful prioritization of capital projects in the region. Also work to promote reforms that incentivize transit ridership and support projects that advance shared state climate and sustainability goals. So next slide. So next week, our Board of Directors will meet and consider the budget for adoption, and it would then go into effect in the new calendar year in 2024. This budget hearing is the end of really what has been many months-long work and process for the service boards and the RTA. We've all been in all six counties making presentations about the budgets, sharing the information that we've shared tonight, but now is our opportunity to hear from you. So that concludes our presentation, and I know it was perhaps a little longer than maybe sometimes in the past, but we did have a lot we wanted to share, and that concludes our presentation. So I'll turn it back to Tina, who is going to coordinate the public comment portion of this meeting. So switch to next slide, and Tina, take it away.
Thanks, Leanne. So my name is Tina Fassett-Smith. I'm the Director of Communications here at the RTA, and we're about to begin public comment. Before we do, I just want to acknowledge we had another director join us. Director Bill Colston, who represents suburban Cook, also joined us. I wanted to acknowledge his presence. We, I have five folks who have contacted us via email and via the chat. And if you would still like to make public comment here, please put your name in the chat at any time, and I will call on you. You can also submit public comment to communications@rtachicago.org. And today is the last day for that public comment, so we would recommend that you do that today. I'm going to start by calling on Charles Paydock. If you want to unmute, you have five minutes to make your public comment. Please begin.
Yes, my name is Charles Paydock. I'm Secretary of Citizens Taking Action for Transit-Dependent Riders. We've been around since 1997, over 25 years, primarily a lobbyist organization persuading elected officials at the federal, state, and local level to support public transit. My remarks have been informally compiled and submitted for the record, like them entered into the comments. I'll be eclectic as usual. First of all, the public hearing process itself has always been something of an adventure with RTA, and that's proven to be the case again this year. It took me about a dozen emails and several phone calls simply to get a confirmation that our organization would be recognized to testify. It appears that each of the service agencies, so what does their own thing? You have to kind of try to figure out what the requirements are and stipulations of each one, and on occasion, you get passed over through the technicalities, as happened with us. and on occasion, you get passed over through the technicalities, as happened with us with CTA last week. Uh, the, as a matter of fact, that's quite amazingly, I contacted RTA, the main desk yesterday, and I was informed, this was amazing, that there was in fact no public hearing, and in fact, there was no Board of Directors. Uh, that's what I mean, you run into these situations. Uh, hopefully, we can get some coherent process uh in order to do this very important function um annually. I would recommend even semi-annually. Um, the um the, the other day, I would say regarding communications as well, uh, I see on the website, there's the things we would like to hear from you. And RTA is in fact the face of the public transit to the passengers, and you fill out these forms, and they seemingly disappear into cyberspace. And you never get an acknowledgement even of a receipt. Uh, don't expect much uh to call it, but um but also now specifically, another thing I would like to request is that under no circumstances do I want our organization, Citizens Taking Action, ever to appear on any RTA list of affiliated organizations or coalition. I figure that would be damaging to our professional reputation as a source of information uh on, on, on transit. For another thing, I would like to thank the compilers of the uh budget presentation here. There's a wealth of information in there. We generally prefer that it be in a PDF format, downloadable in the book type format, if that could be done, perhaps minus some of the illustrations. Now, obviously, the problem confronting public transit is that the termination of federal funding and the decline in ridership with attendant loss of fare backs revenue. It has been our knowledge that to date, we have not found any study, report, or proposal that's been issued that presents a solution. There's absolutely nothing new. We looked over the plan for action by CMAP, and there's very little there that is innovative. And your own uh Transit is the Answer, again, is a reiteration of everything that we've kind of seen before. You can go to page forty-four, is the most central page of the document, Figure seven, and you see eleven methods of funding transit. And all, all it says is increase the, the fund, the uh price, the taxation, or try a few gimmicks, and I will call them that, they are gimmicks, which will not generate any real revenue. Uh, by the way, uh CMAP, I see, is making another challenge, effort, as they did about ten years ago, to take over public transit in the region. I don't know if that's gonna, we look upon that positively, if it will achieve anything at all. Now, we are proposing a, what you really need, and this will fulfill the mission of RTA, is a complete reorganization, a realignment.
So, you hit your five-minute mark, so I'd ask you to wrap up.
Okay, uh, but we would like a, a reorganization into four component levels of transit, bus, rail, routes, and schedules. There's more details furnished in our comments here. Um, those are the five primary components of transit, and you should be organized around, around that end. And the one thing is municipalities have to be making appropriations for the transit service, services pri- provided to the localities. The city of Chicago contributes absolutely nothing in support financially for public transit, as well as the numerous other communities constituting the service area. Thank you very much. Looking forward to seeing some positive, real positive efforts done to improve public transit. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I just want to acknowledge that I see a raised hand from the phone line, and I will come to you as soon as I get through the uh, the, the five or so folks that I have listed. But I do see your, your hand uh on the phone line. Um, the next speaker is Pamela Tate. Uh, I'd invite you to unmute if you're here, Pamela, and make your comment. You have five minutes.
Hi, I'm here. Um, my name is Pamela Tate, and I represent the Climate Reality Project. It's uh Chicago Metro Chapter. We worked with the Illinois Environmental Council and legislative leaders this year to pass the bill that bans fossil fuel purchases by PACE and CTA after July one of twenty twenty-six. And we did this because we wanted to ensure in this climate emergency that CTA wouldn't order any more diesel buses after this date. Of course, they have rushed out and bought three hundred of them. Um, our goal all along, though, has been to get CTA to operate a zero emission fleet um faster than the twenty forty deadline, as LA and some other major cities have done. But um in reviewing the capital plan that you just presented, um, we really got worried because it appears that CTA is falling far behind the charging forward electrification plan that was adopted in twenty twenty-one. And that plan was already much slower than PACE's and every other major transit system in the entire country. In the current five-year plan, CTA plans to spend, I think you said, three hundred and forty-three million in electrification projects, including garages and vehicles, with a much smaller fleet, only seven hundred and seventy um uh fixed-route buses. PACE has programmed almost the same amount, it's about three hundred and eleven million. Why is CTA, which faces so many challenges with its older garages, why is it spending less over the five-year period on retrofitting them and/or building electrification at the terminals than PACE's? Um, I, I also want to note that we think the problem is bigger than the inadequate amount of money being spent or planned to be spent. CTA promised in the charging forward plan that garage construction to accept e-buses would begin this year, twenty twenty-three. Uh, specifically, the Hundred and Third Street Garage Construction was supposed to start this year, and it was going to begin accepting e-buses this year. But this new capital plan is just now programming that money. Uh, so right there, we've got a major gap or delay. I could also mention other garages, if we had time, like the, the Seventy-seventh Street, Seventy-Fourth Street, and even the um, the plan to build a, a new garage on the west or south side. And that construction was supposed to start on the garage in twenty twenty-seven. Where is that capital project in the current five-year plan? We, we couldn't find it, may, it's, if it's there, I think we looked pretty carefully. So, when we came to this budget hearing last year and talked to you, the board, you said that you would be looking closely at CTA's progress in meeting the charging forward plan for electrification. We asked CTA last year to hold off purchasing three hundred diesel buses, which, of course, they have not done. They went, they, they hurried up and purchased them before the deadline. Um, and it's clearly too late to stop the ordering of these diesel buses, though that would have been much better for people in the Chicago region and the planet. But now, we have this even greater worry, which is that CTA is woefully behind in executing its own electrification plan and appears to be not on track for making the twenty forty deadline for full, full electrification of the fleet. We are asking that this board, at a minimum, provide the oversight necessary to ensure that CTA changes its plans, that it keeps its commitment to the full electrification by twenty twenty, twenty forty, even though we think that's too late. We are asking see, that you um push CTA to change its plans and allocate more money toward electrification. And I, I would like to submit um longer comments that I know we don't have time for today. And I guess it's uh communications at rta chicago dot org, which I will do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, and that is correct. You can submit those um, and they will be uh put into our record. I also want to acknowledge um two things before we keep going. Um, Director Gavine, who represents suburban Cook, has joined us, so uh from the RTA Board of Directors. So, welcome to her, and thank you for joining us. I also want to acknowledge um Rochelle Jackson, I see your comment in the chat. Um, we'll make sure to put that in the record as well. Um, the next speaker we have, uh, and I still see the raised hand. I will get to you um as soon as we get through these next speakers, is Garland Armstrong. Um, so Garland, if you're here, please go ahead and unmute. You have five minutes.
Good afternoon, everybody. This is Garland Armstrong, formerly of Desplines, now living in Des Moines, Iowa. How you doing, everybody?
We're doing good, Garland. It's always good to hear from you.
Yeah, um, I just want you to know about where we are at right here. We have a same thing situation like you are. Dart buses right here, they're, they're going into the same situation because, like y'all are, they're heading for a fiscal cliff too, because they said that, that they're trying to get a franchise fee here, that if the buses, to fund the buses, some of the buses here will be cut by forty percent here. That's right, forty percent. And we want to make sure that y'all, to make sure that, that if y'all have a concerning about a franchise fee to fund for transit, because that would be another hot topic of it. So, my suggestion is, use that idea, what Dart is using right here, because I think for twenty, for going into late twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six, a franchise fee to fund for transit, so that, and then make sure that the lawmakers there should see what is what, that your other suggestions, that you should use a franchise fee, so that they could fund the transit, so it won't be that disaster going into early twenty twenty-six. And make sure that the state and, and possibly the federal lawmakers see that idea, because that's the, that's the only thing, like when you show them the data, what will be happening? I think they'll probably say a franchise fee, they want to talk about it. So, my suggestion is, try that and see what their, what their reaction is gonna be and their options are. So, that's my biggest concern, since we're gonna be heading for that fiscal cliff in twenty twenty-six. So, if anybody thinks that might be a choice that we have, that you have, it'll be possibly a backup plan to see what is what will be happening, and make sure that everybody has a backup plan if it does go. Once twenty twenty-six come, to be extremely well-prepared for it. So, so it won't be a lot of thunderous protest over it. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions or comments from y'all concerning like a franchise fee, if that's my suggestion of it. So, what do y'all think about that idea?
Well, Garland, we appreciate your comment, as always. Was that, was that all that you had for comment today?
Yeah, because then I'm, and I want to make sure, once the directors hears about this, um, see what they think about that at their board meetings, to see what they think of it, a franchise fee. See what's their reaction of it, and what's their options of it, and what's their opinions of it? So, if they feel like it, if that will be happening once twenty, late twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six comes through, because, because that might be another choice to see what is, what is it gonna be, that or not. So, they should ask that at their board meetings, to see what they think of, because that could be a possibility, always use as a backup plan to see what they think of it.
Thanks for your comment, Garland.
Okay.
The next person I have for public comment is Ryan Sinwelski. Uh, you can unmute and make your comment. You have five minutes.
Sorry about that. Figure out, uh, let me see. I don't know if the video is working. Okay.
We can, we can hear you and we can see you, yes.
Okay, good. Sorry, I must have hit something by accident. Okay. Um, so, uh, my name is Ryan Sinwelski. I'm head of the Harvey Historical Society. Um, we have been asking for a better design for our new downtown Metro station for almost a year now. And we have been told by Metro repeatedly that Harvey residents must accept a design that we don't want for our station. Now, mind you, despite getting no support from a mayor who steals our tax money, and he intimidates any residents who speak up publicly against him, which obviously he supports this design, uh, we still have over two hundred and sixty signatures. We have a front-page editorial endorsement for our proposals from the Daily South Town from earlier this year, and we have the Downtown Alderwoman support, all asking for a better design that matches our historic downtown architecture. Our other Metro station is currently under reconstruction, and the design received absolutely no public feedback whatsoever, zero. Um, and I'm glad, actually, the gentleman uh from the board, who's from Cook County, um, you had said, came too, so he can hear this. Um, I've spoken several times with David Krallik at Metro, and he maintains that residents chose this design from four choices given in January of this year. In fact, we were presented with four similarly lackluster designs that were not appropriate for our downtown architecturally. Now, it doesn't mean that modern design is necessarily wrong, but you know, we're like, okay, that's great. Put that near O'Hare or Midway or a, a town like Bolingbrook that, you know, is newer. They don't have any historic architecture, right? So, this did not represent choice for our residents. Given all the emphasis from Metro, PACE, and the RTA on equity, let me clarify what equity is for Harvey is not. Getting money for a new har- uh station downtown. So, Brian mentioned that. I agree. I'm all for equity. It's all over Metro's new thing. But just getting a new station, that's not equity. The station we have was built by Metro in two thousand and three. It works just fine. In fact, Metro, we found out recently through FOIA and doc documents, Metro colluded with a former corrupt Harvey mayor to demolish our historic downtown station from the nineteen twenties in two thousand and two against the recommendation of the Illinois State Historic Preservation Office. Giving us a lovely classic design is the least Metro can do to make up for this past blunder. Harvey is a majority-minority community with a high poverty rate. Even so, the Metro Electric Line is the fourth busiest in the whole metro system and has very high recovery rates in rebuilding ridership after COVID-nineteen. I was just looking at that today. It's actually really impressive, and I'm happy for our line. How could so many other towns, though, get these gorgeous, classic architectural designs paid for by Metro, such as New Lennox, both their stations are paid for by Metro? They have barely any classic architecture in the whole town, like Tinley Park's two stations, you know, they, uh, Oakland, they were farm towns. Harvey has lovely large homes that are steps away from our downtown station, as well as historic commercial buildings, that we are told by Metro that we don't really have any historic buildings worth respecting. Is that true? We can't help but wonder if this is yet another case of getting separate but equal treatment from government. The treatment from Metro tells us to sit down, shut up, and be glad we're getting a station. Many of our residents are used to this treatment. We've had many abusive, intimidating mayors. They think they have no voice. I know better, and my family's been in Harvey since the nineteen teens. Um, despite all this active intimidation and threats from our mayor, we still have people waking up and raising their voices to demand a station worthy of Harvey. This station is a bookend to our downtown, and we need our downtown to succeed if Harvey is to survive economically. If this wavy metal glass and design is not good enough for a town like New Lennox, which they totally rejected, they have lovely, a traditional design that would look great in our downtown, then we agree, it's not good enough for Harvey either. Let's make sure we don't repeat the mistakes of our past and tell these Harvey residents, you know, well, you're getting equity, you're getting on the bus, you just have to ride in the back. That's not equity. Um, as something, I also want to remind everybody that um I love transit, we all love transit. However, we know this fiscal cliff is, is coming. If transit needs more funding, taxpayers will not support this, unless we show public boards listen to taxpayers and they don't waste money. We love transit, we're happy to get new money for our station, but Metro must make up for these past mistakes and needs to listen to people who actually care about Harvey. Now, I'm talking to the RTA because Metro has not responded, and it's been almost a year. Now, it's still in the design phase. Um, we had to step away from this issue because we have, uh, we had an issue with the MWRD colluding with our corrupt mayor, trying to kick people out of their homes, uh, including some widows that have lived there for decades. Uh, again, just because he can, and because he's, can get money for it. So, you know, we had to step back from this Metro issue, but we're, 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 we're coming really back into it. We'd really like to see some results. We really want to get conversations going. And um, you know, we just want what every, every other um uh town has. So, um, I do, I do think that's important, though. I see a lot of uh So, I do think that's important, though. I see a lot of voter anger against government waste and the sense that no one's close to it.
That's a five minute limit, so if you could just wrap up.
Yep. No, that's it. That was my last point. So, we all love transit. We don't want things to get shut down. But if we don't change the way these systems are running and show people we're accountable, we're not wasting money, we listen, then we may not get the money and service may be cut. So, thank you for your consideration. Hope to hear from you soon.
Thanks, Ryan. Thanks for your comment. The next name I have in the chat is Kyle Lucas, and after that, I'll call the phone number that has their hand raised, and then we'll go to the phone line. But Kyle, if you are still here, go ahead and unmute and make your comment. You have five minutes.
Thank you so much. My name is Kyle Lucas. I'm one of the co-founders of Better Street Chicago. We're a grassroots advocacy organization fighting for better streets for all Chicagoans. A big part of that is making sure that we have reliable transit. I really want to commend RTA on really taking the charge on pushing for securing funding for transits, especially in this moment where we're facing a fiscal cliff. I think it's really clear that you all are committed to ensuring that we get reliable, dependable funding for transit. So, I do want to commend you on that. I do want to voice that we do really need to push for governance reform. Speaking as a CTA writer, the system continues to spiral. It is not dependable. It is not frequent. And unfortunately, CTA leadership continues to mislead ridership and disrespect them. And I think that that's unacceptable, and I think that we really need to pursue governance reform and ensuring that we have transit systems that are not only reliable, but that are transparent and accountable to the ridership. I think that is absolutely critical. So, I want to just continue to echo that we push for governance reform, that you partner with the Illinois General Assembly to pursue that, and that you make that a priority. Because what CTA riders need is not a chatbot. We need transparent and reliable transportation. Thank you so much.
Thanks so much for your comment, Kyle. Now, I'm going to go to at least one of the phone numbers that has their hand raised, and then I'll open it up to other phone numbers that may not be able to raise hands or access the chat. So, 2935, the phone number ending in 2935. You've had your hand raised for a while. Please go ahead and unmute and make your comment. You have five minutes. All right, I'm going to try and unmute you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Go ahead. Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Jacob Aronov is my name. I'm a member of Citizens Taking Action. I live on the northwest side of Chicago. I'm a regular CTA writer. A couple of things. I'm told that, I'm told that, thank you for this hearing, told that for long-term plan, that you're talking about having the RTA taken over by CMAP. Is that correct? If that's correct, I am opposed to it. I don't see any reason for it. It sounds like a bureaucratic move to me. I think it's totally unnecessary. I'm in agreement with those who say that we need more funding for transit, both local, Chicago needs to increase their allocation to the CTA, and statewide, if necessary. Also, one of the proposals that's been floated around with the legislature is to increase the, increase sales tax allocation to the RTA by one quarter, one percent. I'd like to see that happen if it's necessary, which it comes out to maybe 25 cents per hundred dollars. So, it's a very slight increase. I'd like to see that happen, if it is deemed necessary. Also, the issue of electric buses, how much would it cost? We wonder how much would it cost the CTA to do that? And what kind of timetable do they have to make it happen? And is it possible to have like a hybrid bus, meaning part diesel fuel and part electric? So that you can switch from one to the other? And, yeah, I like to see, like to see the RTA function, the functions of the RTA continued by the RTA and not by, and not by CMAP. Anyway, okay, that's all I can think of right now.
Thanks so much for your comment.
Also, one other thing, would like a written copy of the budget, if I can.
If you can email us at communications@RTAChicago.org with your address, we would be able to send that to you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That is everyone that I had from the chat or from email and who have their hand raised. If there's anyone else who is on a phone line and cannot raise a hand or cannot access the chat, please go ahead and unmute yourself, and you can go and identify, well, you don't have to identify yourself, but unmute yourself and you can make a comment of five minutes.
This is Adam Kerman.
Okay, go ahead with your comment. You have five minutes.
Hi. I wanted to compliment RTA staff for the, this year's improvements in public communications. I did like the graphics on the Transit is the Answer brochure. I thought that was very attractive. And I think RTA's stepped up efforts at public communication this year. So, in this regard, things are certainly better than they have been in the past. I'd like to, I'd like to address the fiscal cliff. One of the tax revenue sources that was not considered is land value taxation, also known as site value taxation. Transportation is the key component in the value of, in the value of land. Downtown Chicago would clearly not exist except for a century and a half of all transportation facilities being anchored in the downtown area. Downtown Chicago gets a free ride with respect to public transportation because they pay no taxes on the value of land created by transportation. This also works to, this also works to encourage housing. And new housing construction is critical to restoring ridership, particularly on the south side and to a lesser extent on the west side of Chicago, where most, where large swaths of land that are still within walking distance of train stations have been depopulated. As an example of how this might work, let's say Metro Electric ran service at a reasonable headway on the south side of Chicago. Instead of trains every two-hour intervals, with the exception of Trains to Hyde Park, let's say trains ran at a more reasonable headway, say every 15 minutes. A neighborhood like Grand Crossing, which is highly depopulated, has lost nearly all of its industry and has high crime statistics and poor public schooling. But if it got transportation improvements, something significant like this, that would encourage the population to come back, and that is well within, that is well within RTA's control. Rents would increase. Now, we don't have to fear a rent increase, because just because there's a rent increase doesn't mean cost of living in and of itself has increased. If a land value tax were substituted for the sales tax, and public transportation were to benefit from this, then people would be saving money because they wouldn't be paying the sales tax. And they would certainly have better access to job opportunities and an improved quality of life. When we do, when we fail to collect land value increase that is due to transportation, then rents will go up anyway if there is transportation improvement. But the taxpayer ends up paying both his landlord and higher taxes, and his landlord did nothing directly to create the transportation improvement that he benefits from. This is a far more stable source of funding than the sales tax. We know experience with the sales tax, that it's subject to vagaries in the economy. Sales tax collection lags economic recovery, and it tends to anticipate economic downturn. Land value taxation would be a far more stable source of funding. That is, that is my recommendation, and it also enhances the mission of public transportation. I would also like to make a brief comment on the capital evaluation.
I just have to comment that you've reached your five minute limit, so if we could just wrap it up in the next minute. Thanks so much.
All right. Thanks, Tina. On the capital evaluation criteria, I think capital programs should be evaluated based on how likely they are to create housing and end-to-end enhancement of end-to-end trips. It's not enough just to say, let's add capital in this one location due to underserved geography. We've got to look at the entire picture of both the origin and destination of the trip. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for the comment. Anyone else who's calling in by phone and is unable to access chat or raise a hand, if you could unmute and make a comment, you can do so now. Okay, I'm not seeing any more names in the chat and not hearing from any more call-in attendees. So, this meeting is open until six o'clock. We RTA staff will remain here until six. Newcomers are welcome to join and make comments until six o'clock. If you have already made a comment, you're welcome to go if you want. You're also welcome to stay. Again, RTA staff will stay here and keep this meeting open until six o'clock, and the recording will continue. Thank you.
If there's a chance I could ask a question, I'd like to.
Hello, I'm sorry. I see a raised hand. If you'd like to make a comment, go ahead and do so. You have five minutes.
Yes, this is Arnold Bradford, Executive Director of Crossroads Collaborative, based on the southeast side of Chicago. We have been talking for several years now about fair integration between the service boards, and I haven't seen that yet. It would make it easier for people to transfer from CTA buses to the Metro, especially over there on the east side, southeast side, where we're very far from the red line, and we have Metro Electric here. And so, we've been looking for fair integration, and I wanted to make sure that money is being provided in the current budget for fair integration between the service boards. That's a comment and a question.
Thanks, Arnold. I'm not able to respond to the question, but it is entered into the record for public comment, so we appreciate it.
Tina, this is Adam Kerman again. May I request that for next year, we resume in-person public hearings on the budget? I think we should have been able to do that this year in the post-COVID environment.
Thanks for the comment.
Can you hear me now? Hello?
Yes, 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 we can hear you.
Okay. Jacob Aronov again. I just wanted to comment, yeah, the previous, who was the previous speaker before Adam?
I don't have a list.
Okay, sorry. Previous speaker was right on. We've been pushing that before. They're all, Metro, Metro has a lot of unused capacity, but the problem is they don't accept transfers from CTA and Pace. And if there was more fair integration, then you'd see buses from, say, the south suburbs landing at a station further south, at a metro station further south, and taking people into the city, and that would free up some of the south, free up, they would be, they would actually make more sense than the current proposal to extend the red line down to 130th Street. Though, I assume that's going to go ahead with, you're going to go ahead with that anyway. But fair integration is a good idea. Needs to be administered.
Thanks for your comment.
Yeah. Yeah.
Hi, Charles. I see that your hand is raised. I would remind you that we, we have a five-minute limit on comments. Um, you're, you can go ahead and make another comment. I would ask you to keep it very short.
It's uh, simply a matter regarding, we read these budgets cover to cover. And one of the things that I found most useful over the years is what is called a, a quick systematic glance data. And if each agent's, we try, that's what I try to compile. And it's such things like the number of revenue miles, number of hours of operation, number of bus stops. And we found that very useful for making an assessment of public transit over the years. And I'd simply make that recommendation to the compilers of, if the one page clicks summary of systematic glance would be so utilitarian in terms of making it. So we're going over five years to assess what direction transit is headed in the region. That's something my comment, my request.
Thanks for that comment. Um, I'm going to put a link in the chat to our, um, one of our dashboards. We have several. Um, it might not be exactly what you are recommending,
Okay, with two minutes remaining, I'm gonna just make a couple quick closing remarks and we'll end this meeting. Thank you so much for everyone who came. If you're still here to provide public comment. Public comment closes today. If you have any further comments, please send it to communications@rtachicago.org. The RTA Board of Directors will meet next Thursday. To provide public comment for that meeting, we must have your comment by noon, the day before, so on Wednesday, at the same email, communications@rtachicago.org. Thank you to all the Board of Directors and to Director Ross for hosting the meeting and for attending and to RTA staff for attending. We'll close the meeting at 6 o'clock, but I just wanted to make sure I make those announcements prior to that. Thanks, everyone, for coming and participating. All right, it is six, so I'm going to end this meeting. Thanks again. We'll stop the recording and it will be available on the RTA website and on our YouTube channel. Good night, everybody.
Thank you, Gina. Thanks, all.
Good job, Tina. Thank you.